It is six o'clock. We are going to start our public hearing, our council meeting for tonight. We welcome all of you here. I think this is a prime example of why we need a bigger building because there is more interest in this. Let me tell you, I will not stand for this. We are going to have a public hearing that is respectful. I'm respectful to you. You're here, you're voicing your opinions, but you are not allowed to treat me like that. Understood? Thank you. I really do appreciate all your interest in the city. It's close to my heart. We spend a lot of time here. The staff has done what the council has asked them to do. We'll have an opening prayer and a bunch of allegiance by Steve Wykes.
All right, please.
I pray that the allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Happy Father, be grateful for this opportunity we get tonight to have this public hearing. It's like spirit to be with us and we can listen to the citizens and feel their concerns. We are thankful for the opportunity we have with such a free country and for the blessings that will be received from me. I'm thankful for all the help that says, "Seth and Jesus Christ."
Thank you, Councilor Wykes. Hey, our meeting is just solely for the public hearing tonight, but we're going to start out with an overview of the truth in taxation process because I think that's misunderstood process. And we're going to turn the time over to Jenny Knight. And hopefully that will answer a lot of questions that we have right off of that. Jenny?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I prepared, as was requested with the assistance of our staff, a short PowerPoint presentation to touch on some of the feedback we received from our open house that was coming through. Are you able to hear through the sound system?
That's a lot better.
So the first slide we have here is what is truth in taxation? And we have a we have a quick video that oversees your property tax and why you do take the taxation. Sorry, our volume is probably not. Now? No? Yeah, because I'll have PowerPoint started.
To property tax and sales tax. Property tax is one of the legs of Utah. What is property tax? Property tax is one of the legs of Utah's so-called three-legged stool of tax revenues, along with income and sales tax. While the state of Utah collects income tax and sales tax, local governments collect property tax and sales tax. Property tax is based on the fair market value of property people own. It includes not only real estate, but business personal property. Your property tax bill is made up of a series of levies, which may include the school district, the county, the city, special districts, and special projects. Any organization that has the authority to levy a property tax could have a line on that bill. Of the property taxes you pay, the vast majority go toward public education. It's an important revenue source to Utah cities. It makes up more than a quarter of the revenue coming into our cities and towns. Sales and property taxes are important because they are the city's primary general fund revenue source. The funds can be used for anything. State law requires the truth in taxation process to notify residents when a city is considering a property tax rate increase. Property taxes are often the most publicly visible because they are paid once a year in a lump sum, and the tax turns on what those assets are worth. It's the oldest tax.
My apologies, that did not have the audio with it, but we will move on.
And it's considered the most stable.
So property tax is a revenue-driven tax. So what does that mean? It means that it is not rate-driven, but it is when everything else remains equal and the property tax values rise, the property tax itself, those rates fall proportionally. So every year, the state and counties work together to generate the certified tax rates. And that is the tool that provides the same property tax revenue to a taxing entity year after year. And if the taxing entity wishes to raise that tax to generate more revenue, then the entity must go through the truth in taxation process. So a lot of a common question that we've received through this process is doesn't the city receive more revenue with increased property values? Not always. In fact, it's contrary to that often when property values increase, the certified tax rate decreases. Doesn't the city receive more revenue with more growth? Not necessarily that either. They take the previous year's tax revenue. They do a small adjustment for growth, and that does go into the certified tax rate, but it's disproportionate oftentimes to the growth that entities are experiencing. Sure. This is a, an overview of the historical tax rates the city has had since the last truth in taxation was held in 2013. As you can see, the first column is the auditor certified tax rate. The middle column is the city's adopted certified tax rate. And the third column is the actual revenue received by the city for those years. The interesting thing with this chart is, as you can see, the middle column has declined consistently from 2013, but the revenue received from the city has incrementally bounced around within less than $50,000 of what the city has received. So why has, why has it exceeded the 100% up to 166% increase? That is what is necessary for the city's budget to balance. If we do not realign the certified tax rate, the proposed rate the auditor has set for this next year would be 0.000564, which would decline further than where it was last year. So to completely balance the city's budget, the new certified tax rate needs to be set to the 0.001500. There are some examples of what that rate could be set to, the 50% increase, 100% and the 166%. It is not uncommon for entities to capture the lost revenue year after year by holding truth in taxation annually. And if Harrisville City, for example, had held truth in taxation each year since 2013, when that tax increase was proposed and adopted, we would have been approximately 14 to 20% and rather than the 166% that's proposed. So that's an example of what could have been captured year after year if the certified tax rate had remained the same. How much of the city's revenue is actually funded by property tax? The city's overall budget, including enterprise funds, is a $5 million, around a $5 million budget. The property tax portion of that is $350,000. So that gives you an idea of how much of the city's budget is actually funded by property tax. The property tax comparison, these are all Weaver County cities. Each city that has an asterisk by them are proposing and going through truth in taxation this year. So you can see where our proposed Harrisville rate actually puts us. It's adopted at the .0015 where we sit compared to some of our surrounding neighboring cities in our county. How has the city balanced without this increase in the past? Well, the left-hand side shows the use of fund balance projections. That is what's a projected deficit that the city could potentially face. And how we've balanced it is the last three years, we have received CARES Act funding and ARPA funding from the federal government that was issued during the pandemic to address the lost revenue. Mayor Tate actually opted to keep this money within the city when the CARES Act money was, was given out and issued. All other cities within Weaver County turned their CARES Act funding over to the county for distribution, but Mayor Tate kept that money inside our city. We were able to boost up our businesses by giving rebates for their lost revenue, and we were also able to balance our budget by the increased staffing issues and other things that we had, overtime issues that we had to deal with during the pandemic. Why is this revenue needed? These are just some pinpointed items that we are needing to address. The main, one at the top is new city facilities are needed. Our buildings are outdated and they do not meet the codes and the demands of our growing city. Our public safety department needs new, a new facility that meets the BCI requirements by state law. We, without going into too much detail, we have to meet certain guidelines for access to police departments, which requires our entire staff to be BCI certified. All employees have to meet the standard because we share this department with our city hall. We need an increased court facility. Over the last couple of years, we've not held an in-person court due to pandemic. When we go back to in-person court, oftentimes, our building looks very much like it does this evening with the parking down the street because we can't accommodate how many people we need inside our facility. We need to address the IT and security needs. As we've gone through recent audits through the city, we have been aware, made aware of some deficiencies in those areas as well. The additional staff that we need to meet the continued service, that it's an expectation by our residents due to not just the growth, but just the growing needs of our, of our city itself. The public safety personnel and programs that are implemented. I'll be repeating myself later, but there are some state regulated mandates from the state legislators that are unfunded mandates that the city has to address. We need to update our utility service equipment to maintain our own sewer lines and our stormwater system. The parks and recreation updates. The mayor gets often feedback why the main park playground has not been replaced as we had to tear out the old one due to hazardous conditions and additional recreation amenities that are often requested. The public works through the road maintenance and repairs, including sidewalks and the public right-of-way maintenance. The curbs and gutters need to be addressed in deficient areas in the city. Code enforcement has been at the forefront of the concern of the city staff in the last year, particularly in the last six months, in trying to address that. Planning and zoning developments and engineering, our emergency management program, our transportation needs to make sure our fleet is maintained and we can get the proper services when the timing is right through the winter months and also the summer seasons. And obviously, most people are aware of the rising costs. The city is not. We also are, are affected by the costs of fuel and vehicle repairs and the maintenance. It affects the city as much as it does personal budgets. So what will the proceeds from the property tax? Excuse me. What will the proceeds? I jumped too far ahead. Sorry. Thank you. Each department needs at least one more full-time employee to balance the workload and meet the necessary provided services for our city. Our facilities, we went into a little more detail than I intended on the other slide. So we've just outgrown our current facilities. We often use Mayor Tate's office for contracted employees because there's a lack of space on a day-to-day operation here at the city hall. The city has held public hearings at Orion Junior High because we don't have enough room to accommodate the public in our council room. And our public safety needs are not being met here, as I touched on earlier. The city is experiencing growth like most cities in the Wasatch Front. This growth is expanding and we are experiencing more development than we have before with nine proposed developments within the city. And although the initial costs of development are paid for by the developers, the long-term services that are provided are provided by the city staff. And the city staff has to expand to meet those demands. And the city anticipates an increase in population of about 50% in the next three to five years with approximately 1,000 new homes coming into our community. What has the city done to balance the current budget? The public works department particularly has realigned all of the utility funds. So operational costs for the utility funds will now be paid from the utility fees selected rather than the property tax or the general fund balance. That was a major undertaking by our new public works director, spent many hours making sure that when you're paying your streetlight utility fee, that it's going to the repair of streetlights and that our property tax is not paid to upkeep our streetlights and other things that we're auditing and trying to address. We've also conducted a solid waste and recycle service audit to balance the cost that the city has been paying for these services against the number of garbage cans and recycle cans at each residence. Some of you may have been affected by this audit as we went through each household and determined whether that, that household was paying the appropriate amount for the garbage services or recycle services they were receiving. The impact fees to address new developments have been updated. Really, our sewer and stormwater impact fees. This is approximately a year and a half to two-year process from start to finish to meet the state mandated guidelines to, to address those impact fees and to actually collect those as part of the new development. We're in the process of updating our public safety transportation and parks impact fees as well. The fee schedules have been reviewed for the utilities and we've passed on the appropriate costs so that the stormwater sewer and also the central Weaver sewer district have increased their fees this last year as well. Additional studies are planned to add a cost to the city. These studies are mandated. We cannot increase our business license and building fees without holding studies to show how the impact is to the community before we make any adjustments to those fees. And we do have to pay for those studies before we can implement any additional increases to those. Why can't the city cut back in staffing to reduce the deficit? Many of you may not be aware, but in 2020, the city reduced staff by one employee in each department in an effort to balance the budget. The result of this decrease in staffing caused a 66% or greater turnover rate in most of our departments. When the tenured employees are lost, the investment in training, education, and institutional knowledge is lost as well, which is ultimately a cost to the city. Myself, I covered several positions for a several-year period trying to keep the, the city running and give all the provided services without an increase to anything over the course of the last probably three years. And this is an example of a cost for a replacement officer on our current scale. So if we were to lose 66% of our police force, that's six out of our 10 officers, at a cost of $16,000. That's just the cost, the basic cost to hire and train a new police officer. It does not include the hourly wage for the field training officer that's conducting that training. That is just the cost that we pay to hire and train an officer. Can the city reduce the proposed 166% increase? Yes, the city council can reduce it. The state mandates that we set up rate at the highest rate we anticipate adopting. The associated risk with the reduced deduction in this would increase the deficit and would substantially affect our, our use of fund balance that we would pull from our capital projects funds. What that means is that we would pull from our rainy day funds to balance our budget. We wouldn't have enough money to balance the budget on our own. The long-term result of this imbalance would create additional hardships on the city to recover from what we're trying to recover from the last 10 years. In healthy budget years, I think it's important to note, in healthy budget years, the state law prohibits cities from transferring more than 24% of our general fund balance. Now, mind you, that's not 24% of $5 million. That's just 24% of our general fund balance to the capital projects fund. So if anyone has the impression the city is trying to pat our pockets or to save more money, we are not allowed to save more than 24% of that budget in any fiscal year. So it doesn't do the city any service to tax more than we are able to use to provide services that are, that are needed for our community. The timeline of this is we held our truth in taxation in 2013. From 2014 to present, our growth and development did slow and staffing needs were stabilized for a while. We didn't hold any truth in taxation, and the revenues were balanced out through the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan Act, which is the ARPA funding. But we did focus on some internal personnel issues the city was struggling with for more than we anticipated spending time on. And frankly, our resources to balance the budget with these CARES and ARPA funds have been depleted and there's no longer that option to, to do that. And that is why this is happening now. So we encourage any questions that you have for staff members to come through to our general questions@cityofharrisville.com. And we're happy to accommodate those questions as our time permits.
Thank you. I think that was a great presentation, a couple of answers, a lot of questions for you. Now, we're going to turn the time over to you for a public hearing. But there are some rules to this, and I'm going to let you know what those are. Okay? So the public, public hearing gives you the opportunity to weigh your opinion. So you come up here to the podium, you state your name and share your thoughts. You have three minutes, all right? We'll have a timer up here. Everyone can see, and you can see what you're, three minutes. And when it's over, you'll sit down. You are only allowed to have your own three minutes. You cannot give someone else your three minutes. Tonight's hearing is not a discussion. So you could leave your thoughts, your, your concerns with us. We will take notes, we'll address those and, and work on those, okay? This is what I should hope that I would need to ask, but please be respectful. I don't want to be shouting. I don't want to hear you're winning and applause, all right? I, I feel like, I feel like we're better than that here. So I have gone through this before. I did not anticipate this happening again. And frankly, I, I hope we go forward better than this. And if there is anyone in the public that is disorderly, we will escort you out if necessary. So if I ask you to leave because your conduct is not good, I expect you to leave. If not, we'll have a two-thirds vote from the council and you will be escorted out. I, I do expect to have order and respect here the whole night. And I think you, I think we're good. We're going to do that. So with that, I'm going to have a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. You're welcome to come up to the podium, state your thoughts, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Bear with me two seconds.
My name is the right owner. I have lived here for 30 years. The reason my husband and I moved here was because we loved Harrisville. But I think everyone here is very frustrated with the 136% increase. We are in a recession, 163% increase. We're in a recession. We can barely afford to buy gas. We can barely afford to buy groceries. I know most of you on this board and are so frustrated. Here's my tax proposal of everyone increasing. You guys are increasing 163%. How many people here on Dixton House? How many people can afford? You're going to be making us decide whether we buy groceries or whether we pay our taxes. I know you guys are saying, oh, it's only $33. And none of us chose to do nine new housing units. So you need a bigger police force. So you need different things. It is not fair on us. We will be moving if you do this. I understand an increase, we all do, right? But not that percent. You could have done it in other years. You can do it at a slower progression. But at that percent, I, I have been here 30 years, and it breaks my heart that I do not want to live in Harrisville anymore. My husband and I, after my daughter fractures, it's very seriously considered moving because I do not think you guys are listening to us. Why, in a recession, would you even think about it? I understand you want to get back up to protocol, but what business in the right now is not making sacrifices? What business? There's not one out there. And I have never come up here to speak before, but I am this passionate about it because all my friends are suffering right now. They're deciding whether to buy groceries or to put gas in the car, and you guys want to do 163% increase. I am not taking every one of your names on this council, and I will not be voting for you if you do this. I will be out there posting for everybody not to put you guys back in because you're not listening to the people. As you can see, look at the door. How many times have you ever had this many people come to this building to do this? It is not fair and it's not what we want. And I am disappointed beyond belief, and I know some of you, that you would do this to us. I was proud every year of other people when they were increasing their taxes that I lived in Harrisville. I am not proud anymore. I am disappointed that I am considering leaving Harrisville after 30 years of living here and loving it. That's all I have to say.
Bear with me just a minute. There, I press this back seat here. They're right there. They're standing there.
Councilman Mayor, thanks for the opportunity to have me speak for a few minutes. I did send a letter. I apologize. My name is Roger Schuman. I live on 1874, 750 West. I went through the public website. I went through a similar thing that Jenny went through. I found it to be quite confusing for a while. And believe it or not, I am pretty good in math. But the, all the percentages don't add up. I can tell you one thing that does add up. 2013, I paid Harrisville $186. Last year, I paid the $286. So that's a 75 to 80% difference. Now you're asking for me to give another $470. So my tax burden will be over $700 to Harrisville City. I, I don't need to be rude, but I don't see the services that you're providing. You need, okay? I don't see things that are happening from the city to make things so that they're good, right? 20 years ago, they served on the planning commission. The very first project I worked on was Walmer. In 20 years, not one additional business has put into those paths, which sells tax revenue, which is covered by your guys' display. You need to make sure you're working on that, too. I've been over here probably five times, probably trying to voice my opinion about manufacturing. They had a plan that came before the city. You're going to change everything from Highway 9 West to manufacturing. I worked in manufacturing for 33 years. They do not pay very much money to the city. They require a lot of money to upkeep. You got HHI. They're trying to develop some more property into industrial manufacturing. It's the wrong way to go. I work for a company right now where we sell RVs. I work for a company right now where we sell RVs. We're the third highest sales taxpayer in West, in West Haven City. You need to start thinking about thirty-two, you need to look at the development you got and figure out how to get some other people to come in. You know, bring in some restaurants. I go out to eat probably six days a week, right? Where do you think I go? You're going to go to Harrisville, Hobby Arts. But there's not a whole lot of other choices other than Chili's and I go there. So I think that you guys need to look at the overall picture. I think a hundred and sixty-six percent is way too high.
Thanks, Joanne Christensen. And I'm speaking in behalf of my husband who had another thing that happened tonight, so I'm just going to read what he said. My name is Curtis Christensen and I live at one sixty-three West Pennsylvania Drive in the city of Harrisville. I've been a resident of this city for nearly thirty-eight years and have seen growth grow significantly over the years. I just want to note at this time too that Curtis was on the planning commission for several years and his job before retirement was he was the county engineer. I'm concerned at this time that my city leaders are considering a proposal to increase the city property tax assessment by one hundred and sixty-five percent. This extremely high tax increase, which is not for just one year, but is to be carried on for years, becomes extremely unfair to the residents of our community. I'm sure the expenses for daily or yearly maintenance of city services have gone up in recent years and some small increases may be justified. But the magnitude of this increase orders line immorality. Indeed, there has been much growth in the city in the past years, but the taxes from this vote has added significant intensity to the commerce. There has been a fifty percent increase in homes. If there has been fifty percent increase in homes, there has also been a fifty percent increase in monies coming into the city to pay for regular city services. If there is a need for the new facility, then these facilities should be paid by impact fees and not just a tax increase to all city residents. The purpose of impact fees is to cover the cost of the new construction that the new residents bring to the city. A recent meeting was held regarding proposed bonding for the new facilities. In the northwestern part of the city, this bond bonding should come before the city in the form of a general public vote to ensure that the residents are in favor of spending expenses. Generally, a GO bond, which is done before the voters, is also less expensive to residents than bonds simply passed by the council. I encourage you to reduce the amount of proposed tax increase to a more reasonable amount that only covers the necessary cost of inflation to cover, cover the cost of employee increases and maintenance costs for existing services.
My name is Eric McTee, I live on two oh five Pennsylvania Drive and built our house about thirty-one years ago and lived here ever since. I just want to say I looked at the numbers on my property tax schedule and the taxable value raised twenty-eight percent. So you automatically got a twenty-eight percent increase from me on just that portion. So there's a little bit of an increase you're getting every year. Say you did raise taxes, but you're still getting from our county taxes, you're getting a percentage of that. We're in the worst economy in forty years, all of us in our daily lives, everything's gone sky-high. We're going through the same problems you guys are with all of your budgets, okay? We don't got somewhere that we can go and say, well, we want a hundred and sixty-six percent. I don't understand where you got the number from. But I went through this twenty-six page report here and just adding the salary and benefit increases, you're asking for six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars in increases. You did eliminate seven, seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight. That leaves six hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars increase in just salary and benefits only. That's fifty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty cents per month of increase. I understand the need for growth, law enforcement officers, I'm all for that. While the city's getting bigger, we need to hire more law enforcement officers. But I don't understand the, the massive growth on the rest of them. I think you guys, I agree with the last person, you need to go back and look at this hundred and sixty-six percent. The rest of us here in Harrisville, all our families had to modify our budgets, so we're asking you to modify the Harrisville's budget. Hopefully, the next election, all the citizens are going to remember who scored a hundred and sixty-six percent increase. I went through the last tax, taxation deal. You know, I said it then, I'll say it again, ask for a hundred percent. And then you say, well, we're going to do you a favor, we'll take seventy-five. Just tell us what you really want to get, don't blow us away with a hundred and sixty-six. Well, let's see, hundred, hundred and sixty-five point ninety-six. Please take another look at it. I like living here, but you know, you're, there's a lot of people here looking around here. How many people here go movies in the park? Want seven thousand dollars for movies in the park? How many movies are you going to have for seven thousand dollars?
My name is Nadi Weeden and I represent Brad and Heather Raymond. I've listened to everything everybody has said and we have to agree. My question is, has this already passed? And we're just standing up here telling you that we can't afford it and you're telling us that it doesn't matter because it's already done? That's what I kind of want to know. I, my, my children have six children, four still at home. They're going into high school, they're going into junior high. Their fees have been raised, their food bill is astounding, what they pay just to feed their family. And then to have even a fifty percent raise is going to be noticeable in their budget. A hundred and sixty-six percent. We're hoping like the last gentleman said, that you're telling us a hundred and sixty-six percent and you're going to do us the favor of raising it only a hundred percent or seventy-five percent. But still, guys, tell us what you really mean and it will help us to understand better. We, we know what you need, we agree. Our families need the same thing. We love the police, we love the fire department, we appreciate the services that the city provides for us and the county provides for us. We want those things still, but everybody's budget has got to tighten. And if you can find a way to increase those taxes that you do receive in other ways, other than property taxes, we would be most grateful.
Oh, I won't pick.
User error, right?
Thank you. I'm David Beckham, I live over here on twelve twenty North. I just made a couple of notes, I won't definitely take three minutes, but I just wanted to, to mention a couple of things that's probably pretty obvious to most people here. The values on our homes right now are an all-time high. Seems kind of ironic that you picked now to increase your taxes on it when it's at an all-time high, giving us, I guess, the biggest boom for our buck, right? Food, gas, everything's at an all-time high and you choose to do this property tax now. You mentioned that our population is probably going to increase by fifty percent. You've got nine new projects, all of this housing is going to be going up. If you increase our property taxes now, you don't have to bug those people about property taxes once their homes have been built, right? But you're still going to have a fifty percent growth in population and properties that you're going to be able to get revenue from. Okay, I don't, personally, I don't know where you're going to get the water to have all these people flush their toilet because now where that's coming from, I have no idea. Last thing was you had mentioned that you guys can't save the money from the revenue that you've earned. I understand that, I also understand that, you know, when you, when you watch the office and the guy says, explain it to me like I'm five years old. And his assistant says, if you don't spend the money now, you won't get the money next year. I understand that if you get an increase, you don't have to save it, you can spend it. Government has a way of doing that very well. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Diana Wilhelmsen, I live on fourteen hundred North. One thing I just want to clarify, you guys have done yourself a big disservice by talking about this one hundred sixty-six percent. Because that's based on if there is no budget increase. If you go by last year's taxes versus what the increase is, it's only like one hundred and twelve percent because we don't have the reduced. So I don't, I wish the city, county, whoever did that would stop talking about the one hundred sixty-six percent because it's not that big. If I look at my own tax, our house went up by almost twenty-two percent in the appraisal, went up by a hundred and twenty-four thousand. But my, if we have no tax increase for Harrisville City, my taxes only actually decreased by four dollars. So we've got to do something. I went back and looked through the things on the computer. And back in two thousand and eleven, we had about fifty-three hundred, fifty-four hundred residents, depending on which website you look at now, we're buying anywhere from sixty-six to seventy-three hundred residents. The certified tax rate has reduced by forty-five point two percent since two thousand and nineteen, sorry, two thousand and thirteen, sorry. And yet we've increased by about seventeen point five percent in population. Something's got to give. And when I look at this proposed budget, I'm thinking, okay, we're, we're tightening our belts. But I'm looking at this and I'm, I'm looking at some of the things going, oh my goodness, why are we doing this? I look at parks and recreation and there's eight hundred dollars for cornhole. Really? Cornhole? I've got a cornhole instead of my house, I'm glad, I'm glad to let you use it, okay? If I look at the fall festival, it's listed there twice. Once that goes up from seven hundred to fifteen hundred and once goes up from one thousand to three thousand for the fall festival. We've got to tighten our belts. If I look at the youth council, it goes from three hundred to twenty-five hundred. And I'm thinking, what does that cover? Because the eight hundred is covered under parks and recreation and the fall festival is under parks and recreation. I'm not sure why the youth council needs all that much money, but that's just me. I'm looking at the mayor and council budgets and there's five hundred dollars for uniforms. You guys don't need another shirt, okay? There's just things that we can, we can weed out of here, we can tighten our belts. And there's things we don't need. I realize we're going to have to increase the, the CTR, the certified tax rate, but not as much as it's, it's proposed to be. Thank you.
My name is Wally Digger, I'm the president. I'm property owner in Harrisville. I prepare about twenty municipal budgets in my career. The scene of increase of a hundred and sixty-five point nine-five percent. I'm sorry you had bad advice at laying off people a few years ago. Apparently, you received bad advice because that happened. In the presentation, there's a lot of mixing of enterprise funds and general funds. You should not be using any general fund to take care of your enterprise funds. They should all be self-sufficient, totally. I understand a need for increases. I understand a need for decreases when you have. So the dollar amount, eighty dollars for a cornhole?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred. Hundred and sixty-six point nine-five percent is just unconscionable. There are ways to trim a budget without cutting personnel, without cutting services. There are ways to make this balance without putting such a burden on people who live here. I don't know what your sales tax rate is, this doesn't identify that. Sales tax is a good way to export your tax liability to someone else who doesn't live here, especially when you have a Walmart. Not everybody at the shops that have Walmart, there's an Harrisville. Someone mentioned not promoting a industrial area. I would disagree with that. Maybe it does not generate taxes, it generates employment. Employment is very critical of people who live here who are not retired. Really ask you to take a serious look at every increase and come up with something that's a little bit more palatable to the people who own property here, the people who live here. Thank you.
My name is Chris Kilpatrick, I live in Harrisville. We moved to Harrisville, bought a house here because it was affordable and it was something that we thought we could raise kids in and make them enjoy. A hundred and sixty-six percent increase in taxes is unreasonable. There are things that we do agree that you need to raise tax on, but we do agree with police officers and many things. But eight hundred dollars for a cornhole or a park or other things, yes, we like our kids to play and have fun. There are times when you need to tighten up that budget. When prices go up, I don't get to go to my boss and say, hey, I need a hundred and sixty-six percent increase in pay because things went up. My wife and I have to sit down and look at that budget and we have to evaluate what we can and cannot afford. And there are things that you guys can't cut and you need to look that closer. There are things that you cannot cut and a hundred and sixty-six is unreasonable. That is not okay, it is not acceptable. That's all I have to say, thank you.
My comments are more directed to the council members here rather than the city employees. Because, no offense, but city employees don't represent the people. And city employees love big budgets, they love spending, they love all the perks of their jobs. So they're going to be for big budgets, lots of taxes. They may say not, but it's true. I'm right, I'm talking to the council members here. You've been elected to represent the will of the people. Now, when people express their emotions and opinions in here, it's not being disrespectful. You're getting a gauge of how people feel about certain issues. Now, this tax increase of a hundred and sixty-six percent is so loud that we are having a hard time hearing all the reasons and justifications of the tax increase. You know, while it may be warranted, a hundred and sixty-six percent is outrageous. I've been talking to the Weaver County clerk and they can't believe it's that high either. It's, it's just crazy to me. Now, one of the reasons I've heard of justification for a tax increase is we haven't increased taxes since two thousand and thirteen. Well, is that really justification? Do you ever thought that that's a good thing? You know, Harrisville was a great place to live, people love being here, they're proud that taxes aren't high. And it brings developers, it brings businesses, it brings people here because of the low cost of living. Now you want to be like California, other places, high taxes drive people out, that makes no sense. We don't want to be like that. We don't want to become the third highest tax city in Weaver County next to Oregon and Riverdale. We don't want that. So I would ask that you council members, as representatives of everybody here in this room and all the residents of Harrisville, hear what we're saying. We don't want this, we don't want all the high, you know, all the services and all the things that other places have. We're content with Harrisville being Harrisville, the way it's been. You know, we love it here and it's, and I would say put aside the personal agendas, your personal wants, all that and listen to the voice of the people. It's obvious here, no one's being disrespectful. We're just telling you what we wish and you need to respect that as our representatives, okay? You're different than the city employees, you represent us.
Hi, I'm Christine Pope, I live at twenty-four sixty
Hi, I'm Christine Pope-Medev at 2460 North 750 West. First of all, I echo everything Mr. Lilly just said. I agree with everything he said. I feel like Harrisville City needs to step back and take time to reassess the idea of imposing a large budget increase in the same year that Weaver County's is increasing properties taxable value, some of them very vastly. The tax burden is becoming unbearable and the seeming uncaring attitude of city officials who propose 166% tax increases part of that will drive people to leave Harrisville. If we're going to leave here. Some numbers based on my 22 notice that I received. The city's proposed tax rate is more than twice in 22, when it was in 2021. In 2021, $215 of my property tax went to Harrisville City. If, without any of the increases for the individual entities, my property tax rate would increase 18% to $245. If there's, yeah, 14% is, it's actually a 14% increase coming to Harrisville City in 2022 over what I paid in 2021. If all the individual entities increases are granted and the county's property tax valuation rate stands, my property tax rate will increase over 43%. And that, every property on my street and around the corner will increase between 40 and 45%. I will be paying $652 to Harrisville City, which is an increase of more than 200% of what I paid for last year. Thank you.
Jason Hadley, 2262 North 650 West, where I live. I have just a few questions for the city council, and I know you cannot answer them, but these are for your consideration. I'd like to know, at what point in the last 10 years did you know that a tax increase was needed? And why wasn't anything done? Was it four years ago when we started laying off people? Was it last year? Was it really this year? I feel that an emergency on your part for dereliction of duty does not constitute an emergency on our part as citizens of this city. This is a complete dereliction of duty on behalf of our elected officials. We need our elected officials to be smart enough to recognize when an increase of revenue is needed. We know we need an increase. But because of dereliction of duty on behalf of those seated in front of us, I think a graduated approach needs to be considered. Your dereliction of duty is not an emergency for any of these 120 people that are behind me, nor those that are online, plus those who are represented up here in the capacity of city officials. I would hope that you would consider the response, let's graduate this over time. This was not our fault. This was caused right here in this room over the last 10 years. Thank you.
My name is Kathleen Ho-Hoash, I live at 1149 100 East in Harrisville. I have actually been dealing with government for the last nine months and trying to keep government in its place. I'm going to tell you, Thomas Jefferson said, "To preserve our independence, we must not let our rulers load us with perpetual debt", which is what you guys will do if you do raise the taxes. A lot of us, including me, I'm on a very fixed income. And to even have my house payment go up $100 a month is not good for me. I do have to decide what I'm going to pin, what I'm going to let go. He says, "I am for a government that is rigorously frugal and simple", which is what we are asking you guys to be. We are in a recession, a lot of us here in this room and online, we've had to tighten our belts because of the price increase. And I realize there is a price increase. But what we're asking you guys to do is tighten your belts like we've had to do. I'm just going to end with the power under the Constitution will always be with the people. And notice, there's a lot of people in this room. It is entrusted for certain divine purposes and for a certain limited period to representatives of their own choosing, which means we chose you guys. You are our servants. We are your masters. And whenever it is executed contrary to their interests or not agreeable to their wishes, their servants can and undoubtedly will be recalled. George Washington, by the way, quoted that. So we will be paying attention to who wants us to raise our taxes by 165.95%. I personally was appalled when I seen that because I can't ask for a raise of 166.95%. The government will literally laugh at me like, yeah, right. I can't ask for a raise. You guys need to tighten your budgets and know who it is that puts you where you're at. Thank you.
Here is Thomas, 1100 North Harrisville. I lived here for about 12 years now. And I think you people ought to be totally ashamed of yourselves. If this was the Boston Tea Party, you'd all be thrown over into the waters. And maybe that's a good way to look at it because this is an important thing. We, the citizens here, are speaking to you and you better listen because this is not something you can just up and do in a great big hurry. I'm a senior citizen here and I live on a very limited budget. And this would be a great burden on me. All of these kind of people, very good working people or retired, if they can't make it, you people do not deserve to be adding things to your budget. You need to trim it down, you need to place some fire and that's about it. We don't need all this added on things. You know, we need this for this and this for that. I think you could do a lot better and I think you ought to certainly look at it. And like fellow before said, remember, we elected you to do a job for us, not to come up here and tell us what we should be doing and how much money we can hand you. Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to present this to my, my name is Reed Brown. 670 West. Thank the Council to care tonight, I hold heard loud and clear to our commission. I wish one very well there tonight, I hope he will. I must say that the presentation made on this $10,000 piece of equipment here is confusing. The temporary address, wherever money was going, having the recent life population could understand that. I live in, in a nicer area in Harrisville called the Colli's, it's a colonial spring. We don't have much services in the city there, so I don't know what to do with it. Funds that you do not use for snow removal, taking care of our roads, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We do receive police support there when we need it and we appreciate that. To be honest with you, that's the only volume that I have seen in the 14 years I've lived here from this community. We are, I'm a special area there. I know the states, the laws of the state of Utah in HRA is totally unfair. Yes, we're on fixed income. It's a good week for the remodel ability for the colonial springs there. It happened along social security mode. So I will give bird, not clear of what has been said here tonight. I think it can be adjusted, justice made. I served most of the council for eight years in Single Mountain, Tennessee. So I know what you're struggling with. You're in that eight years, we basically never had one rate increase, we had the ability to control costs. I don't think our costs are easily controlled here. So thank you for listening to us tonight. I hope you take heed. I think this round here demonstrates, we do not want this kind of tax increase. Thank you.
My name is Howard Digger. I own commercial property, I'm 89. I kind of think it's a shame that the previous city councils let it go this far to where we did this incremental tax increases to keep up with it and then boom, we get hit with something like this. But on, on as a commercial property owner, I get taxed 100% of my value. And my taxes with your proposed increase is $4,400 in 18 cents, 44. And then the county with all the other line items has hit me for another $4,800. So my taxes are going up almost $10,000 on the property this year if this goes through. I just wonder where it's going to end. Any increases we see in a business, we pass on to our customers. All my tenants will have their rent raised and on my business, I'm going to raise my, I'm going to raise my fees. I just wanted to wear dance. It just keeps on going. I feel especially bad for your residents on fixed incomes that don't have anywhere to turn. Cities got their hand up for this big of an increase. I think it needs to be reconsidered and do it every year, but do it a little bit at a time from now. It's just astronomical that that big in one year.
Hi, my name is Howard Reader. Moved to Harrisville five years ago, whatever, and love the city, you know. Love the police force, everything, you know, but as far as this tax increase, it's just national. Yeah, just to put it in perspective, people saying that they can't go to their boss and ask for 166% raise. I, under, well, with the union contract and everything we're currently, I get a 5.3% pay rate increase every year. That's 95 cents an hour. So, yeah, I mean, it's not enough to accommodate for the tax increase, whatever. I mean, how many years would I have to get that 5% increase to accommodate for 166% a year increase with our property taxes? It's just, it's just not feasible. You know, we're already paying 24% higher inflation tax, whatever, you know. And then cap it off with another 166%, whatever, you know. It's, it's just too much, you know. And like everybody said, you guys are elected officials, you guys work for us because we put you in that condition, whatever. And, you know, just take that into consideration.
Sorry. Hi, my name is Kim Mulder. Like everybody said, I may not understand that we need increases. You can't imagine being a police officer, getting paid what they get paid and get shot at every day. But at a certain point, that's what you're doing to us. That 166%, you guys have shot, fired shots. It's not fair for the people that are still. And every time I turn around, there's a field being demoed to throw more houses. At a certain point, you need to put in houses and put in some restaurants, like everybody else said, and stores and things that will help increase the revenue of the city and not hit us. You look at that, that one thing Jenny had up there with all these, all these cities putting in more taxes. Riverdale's good. You go out there, Riverdale, you pay a little more tax, but guess what? You have more than three choices of food. You have car dealerships you can go to, you have movie theaters, you have all this stuff. What do we have in Harrisville? You got Ante's Chili's and hot beers and chili dog place that surprises still alive. So, you know, if you want money, go and get it the other way. Don't get the people that live here. Because we've all lived here for a reason. My wife and I, like she said, we've been here for 30 years. There's a reason. We love Harrisville. But if you're going to nail us at 166% taxes, what's the next one going to be? You're going to give me for 200 then, 253? Because we need a new facility? Seems to me like, you know, it's just a lot of money that we're just going to throw around. $800 for a cornhole. If I would have saw that, they'd probably let me take me out because that's ridiculous. I spent 28 bucks and made my own. If you need me to, I can make you some. We're cheap. But I think the big thing is, is we live here because we like it. Not because we have all these fields, we should plant more houses. Fields not there to plant houses, it's to grow crops. We don't have any of those anymore. Pretty soon we're going to be wondering where our food's coming from. Now all of a sudden I can't water my lawn because we don't have enough water and we're getting in another couple hundred, another thousand houses into a, an open space. It was a great golf course. And where are we going to get the water? And, you know, you keep talking about sewers and all this stuff that we have to keep up. We wouldn't have to fix them more and make them bigger if we didn't keep planting access. Because it's been fine for how many years? I understand there's things that you have to do to keep them up. But we that live here, we shouldn't have to pay more money to have all these services increased for the ones that are coming in. Because where have you been here? We've already paid for that a couple times with taxes. So, so I got, I got more, but I'm done.
Shane Strubble, I live here in Harrisville as well and I've got five kids and three of them have married and moved on. Guess where they live? They live right here in Harrisville. It's a great place to be. Love it here. I just wanted to make sure that, just because it's implied that everybody in here is not happy about this, I want to make sure that my voice is heard, that I'm not happy about this either. Please do not do it. Totally against it. Definitely need increases. There are, there are needs for things to be taken care of for sure. Totally on board with, I'm doing whatever we can to make sure that Harrisville is a secure place and things like that. But I know that, as everybody else has said, there's different places where we can look and cut back. This would definitely kill not just my family, but my children also that live here. I will say this, I'm willing to put a little bit into the air conditioning if you guys need that. I do have a cornhole set myself.
That's kind of my introduction. I'm Kevin Harris with an Harrisville. I echo what a number of people have said and they've done more elephant to eat. In some ways, I'm up here because a lot of elephants have been tricked my way and expect to get a big worker. I agree that the budget could be addressed, it could be modified, a careful look by the council as we asked by a number of fellows. It's really serious and neat things to do that. Appreciate it. I want to make a clarification that new growth is funded at a certified tax rate. It was implied that it's not necessarily, unless we hide in their truth and taxation was wrong, which I found a great help online to understand. I came to the open house and was a little dismayed at the lack of information given to me other than it's been a long time since we've done it. That's particularly on poster, I kind of posted myself there to try and help others understand. I do appreciate what was presented very much, that it is revenue base and that as our property taxes or our value of our homes go up, that intentional adjustment made so that the cities still get the same amount of revenue. The increases likely that we saw were potentially from growth. All the new homes they're talking about will be taxed at a different rate than the golf course ever was. And any roads that are there, let's see the funding to cover that. Again, I encourage you to consider carefully the increase and draw tax considerably from where it's at. Thank you.
My name is Jordan Reed. The only thing I really want to talk about tonight is I came to a city council meeting, it's probably been seven, 10 years ago, when Mayor Matthew Godfrey did a presentation for us and he told us directly not to go after our city for revenue. He said those were bad ideas to increase taxes that way. Obviously, those things need to be done over time as property values and things need to be accounted for. It's not always going to stay the same, right? That's not going to happen. We can't expect that. He instructed us that time to go after business and to make Harrisville business strong. And I don't think we've done that in the last eight years. So I would ask tonight that if increases happen, which fine, whatever. And I don't care that we spend $800 on a cornhole, spend $2 million. If it keeps kids busy and keeps people off their couches, I'll dump all the money I can in Parks and Recreation so Brian Feifman can do his job right. I'm all for it, okay? Kids need to have a place to go and communities need to be communities and that's where we're spending money on. Kids need to have a place to go and communities need to be communities and that's well worth spending money on. But at the same time, all I ask is if we do an increase, tell us what the plan is for the next 10 years. What's the plan? Where are we going to be in 10 years from now? What are our projections? How can we do things to avoid this in 10 years again? And what are we going to do to make it better? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hello, city council. I grew up in Findout. I am living in Harrisville as well. So I don't, I'm not going to pretend to know about all the taxes that have been going on, this and that. It's like that's something I don't really pay attention to. For the same time, with all these people, with all the, with all the emotion and passion behind it, I know that there have been some wrongs made. And especially with like some of the parks and rest stuff that people were talking about, like thinking, wow, I could just did it for theater, maybe it's like, hey, I'm a carpenter, just get somebody else with like game projector and bring it up. But not like some thousand dollars over that or whatever the amount was. I also talked to a lot of new people at work and things like that where they're looking for houses and stuff. And with these tax increases of 166%, like if I want to go to a different place, not Harrisville, they're going through a little bit of a tax thing right now. Like you guys have been great. It's a shame that this is a decision that has been made. But yeah, I really hope that in the future, the citizens and the city council come together and actually work at it. I think where we're all happy with. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Scott Moon and I live in the city. And this is the first time in my life I've ever been involved in politics. So yeah, I just wanted to ask some questions for a food for thought. Why is it viewed negatively to have some meetings in our junior high? To me, okay, that's a lot of work to get everything there for that one time. But it seems to me like some creative opportunities could exist with that where we could partner with the school and have stuff there already. So then all we would need to do is go there, it's already in the locked closet. You know, spend the 10 minutes, set it up, use it. That, that seems like a healthy partnership. With addressing the, this building and needing to have it a little bigger. I've been here in the traffic court. It is worse than this some days. And I really feel like we do need to vote, but right now it's so expensive. If we did it in two years, would it save us 30%? Because no lumber, metal, labor, everything's a little bit less. I don't know. But just, you know, some of those creative thoughts I think would be really effective for, but thank you.
My name is Ashensville. 831 Little Pre-Track. I've been in Harrisville since 2017. When me and my girlfriend were shopping for houses. We left from this far north, it's almost weird, all the way to like mainly because we both worked outside of Harrisville. It was just beginning when the market started to really rock it up. We got the house bought just in time. I can tell you, we was in the rush that we, one thing we did not consider was taxes. It's, it's right on there on every listing. It shows that not a tax, probably taxes you're opposed to. It's one thing where we didn't have to consider it, even though some like places in Hungary, you could obviously see the obvious spike in taxes. I didn't prepare a speech on this one. I've just been taking notes. The main thing we considered was space and as well as the community that we live in. The first thing we noticed when we got here was quiet. And we lived next to railroad tracks, but it was still quiet. Space between our houses with our neighbors, but we also have family neighbors. I can tell you within view of my house, I can see five, the five families that I know that are on fixed income. You know that they're the hardest to get by any kind of tax increase. But in actuality, every resident right now in this economy, they just don't want a fixed income. I've never held a political position or public office, but I have worked in various positions throughout my career, both blue and white collar. I've never been in the county. I don't understand taxes. I rely on Jason R. Block to be mine. But one thing I have been is I have been impersonating. I recognize negotiations when I see it. We stand up and we ask for everything that everybody thinks they need in order to perform. But we really need to look at the things that we need to be addressed about budgeting and about cursing. Like the previous, maybe it'd be better off to wait until the market stabilizes since wood is still 350% higher than it was two years ago. Lastly, I just want to know if any for increases was considered during the rezoning meetings for all these new developments? And more importantly was water supply considered for the new developments? I do believe we need to be the slow residential growth and maybe consider some rezoning for commercial as that adds jobs, sales tax, a place for people that live in Harrisville to actually work in Harrisville. Thank you.
Yay. Hi, I'm Jennifer Reader. I just wanted to make a quick comment. I love Harrisville. And I do my best to get to know everyone in Harrisville. And I love my neighbors. I love everybody that is in the community. And this isn't even, this is probably only a quarter of the people that live in my neighborhood. And in going out in the community, I know how many senior citizens live in our community and not even a fraction of them are here because they are too elderly to get here. They're unable to get here. They don't understand what's going on. And I'm speaking on behalf of them right now. There are a lot of them here and like some other people said, there's those of us that are in our 30s, 40s, 50s that live here as well that are living on a tight budget. But I know a lot of the senior citizens that live in our community are on a very tight budget. And my question to you is when they are struggling and they can't pay their taxes, who's going to be there for them?
Hi, I'm Lloyd Barker and I don't live in Harrisville, but I do business. Right next to Howard, he had earlier his business. Mine's quite similar. We have quite a few people that rent from us. I was going through my emails and I came across an email that I received on this last tax increase. And you guys mentioned to me that we'd write down our concerns as you were addressing them. Now just read this little bit of it. Last night in the city council meeting, you mentioned that if we would write down our suggestions and give them to you, then you would make sure that the city council would read that before you meet again on Thursday. I mentioned about the savings that Lloyd's Tracery's, I also, Lloyd's Tracery's and Blinds has saved by switching our vehicles from regular fuel to natural gas. Ogden City, I know runs part of his garbage trucks on natural gas as well as Weaver State runs its shuttles on natural gas. When I was in Disneyland last spring, they were running all their shuttles on natural gas. Kennet God is a believer, they run a lot of vehicles on natural. It does get to be frustrating when you see all these cities with all these fancy SUVs and new police vehicles purchased with taxpayer dollars driving around. It seems like we have no care of trying to save the taxpayers some money. It's always easier to spend somebody else's money. We need to get into the mentality that it's our or my money. And possibly we would be more conscientious. Example of fuel savings we have had, my lead salesperson was driving a Toyota pickup small. We switched him over to natural gas on the city, which is 30 to 40 miles per year. $1.55 per gallon. Now it's $2.25 compared to what it's five bucks now. So we're still saving a lot of money on natural gas. It was over $500 savings. I'm not saying switch all of the vehicles, just think about it when it comes to finding a replacement vehicle. Now, then this is your replies. I got a reply from Rover. Is Rover still with us? All right, thanks Rover for your reply. Thanks Lloyd, I appreciate the insight. I hadn't heard the idea of residential slash commercial. As far as the natural gas, I would like to do some inquiry with the police department, the public works. It has merit. I would like to talk about the police sometime. Haven't heard back from you yet, maybe next week. Then the only other reply I got, I think was from Mary. Just Mary, he said, I just appreciate your reply. Don't, you know, let's, I'll just say, let's do something. Or thanks for your information, let's do something. You know, let's try to save some money. I mean, that's how I ran my business. I had, I didn't go to Joe Public and say, I've got to raise your, raise your blinds now 166%. Otherwise I would be out of business. Thanks.
Russell Andrews, live here in Harrisville. We moved here seven years ago. We actually were going to move to North Austin until we got to North Austin. We can't get out of Harrisville and fell in love, right? Awesome place to live. A couple of months ago, we decided to move. We were going to move to Idaho because Harrisville was getting too busy. We saw thousands of homes coming to the area to visit for us. We came to Harrisville because it was Harrisville, not because it was North Austin, not because it was Riverdale, not because it was anywhere else. This is North, this is Harrisville, this is why people are here and this is driving them out. So I'm standing here as Peter and y'all are Paul. And we don't want you to rob us. Don't rob Peter or Paul. And that's what this feels like. Thanks.
Hey Dixon, I live here in Harrisville. I've been here for 20 years. I just want to echo what everybody else has said and just say that I'm also opposed to such a drastic tax hike and especially now the cost of everything going up. This just seems like a shock. It seems like a just a, just another blow. And I think a lot of people are feeling that blow. So please take that into consideration. I'm sure you are too. Those of you that live here. Unfortunately, I just feel like it's, well, can't speak for everybody else, but I feel like those of us that are here feel like it's a bit much. So I'm not going to repeat what everybody else has said. I just echo what they said and voice my opposition to this. And ask, can you go back and revisit it?
Thank you for listening to us today. Thank you for this opportunity to have you have to come and speak. My name's Boyd Five. I live on 91 North, 150 West. I've been here for almost 40 years. Seeing a lot of growth in the city. It's subdivision, subdivision and things have changed. You can't stop change in housing. We can try to get businesses in here to get more revenue for us. But the thing that kind of irritates me, you know, we see a park out there. They haven't done anything with the park for I don't know how many years. We used to have softball, things like that. And, and I don't know how much it caught, the revenue brought into that, brought a little bit, but brought kids into our, into our parks. We don't have that anymore. We don't have a lot of things, but yet we want to increase our taxes 165.96%. That's just outrageous. I know the last 40 years, we have been dealing, you've been dealing with new development, correct? New proposals on land, the development. You know, back then that you was going to have more property, more homes in this area. You should have stopped back then and started increasing it just a little bit. A little bit's a lot better than 166%. What's sad and what has been bothering me, a couple of days ago, I got a phone call from a neighbor. He's 87 years old. And he asked me about the concern I had. And if I looked at it and I said, yeah, I said, I've been out there in my five acres screaming. And I hope no one heard me what I said because it was outrageous. And it's, and it saddened me that he told me that he doesn't know if he can live here anymore because of the taxes. All the taxes increased, his increase in Harrisville. Mine went up dramatically. I meant way up, almost 200%. From 200 and something to 500, almost $600 I'm paying. Businesses like they said are getting hurt by this. There's something we should be able to do to slowly increase this, to come up with what we need for the city. Not all at once. That shouldn't happen. Just like the buildings, everything in the building that you guys want, it increased cost has gone skyrocket. And we delay that for a year or two. I know we need it. How many times do you see this much, this many people in this building? I've been here for almost 40 years. Few times I've seen a pact, that's it. So I just wanted to leave that way because it, it kind of hurt me when my, my neighbor was concerned that he can live here. He lives, he lived here for 27 years. He don't know if he can do it anymore. And I know there's a lot of people in Harrisville that are on fixed incomes that can't do that anymore. Thank you.
My name's David Anderson. I live on North Harrisville Road. And fortunately, I think my daughter was able to, with her husband, purchase a home on North Harrisville Road. It's a wonderful street. However, the cost of this proposal is a real burden on those of us who just retired. I can't afford it. I'm on a fixed income. And I really don't want to have to go get a job. I would like to live my retirement. In a comfortable way. Tax increases and this isn't the only one we currently want to increase tax to, but nothing in comparison with 166.96 or whatever it is, 166%. Few years ago, they sold Ben Lomond Golf Course out from under us golfers. And it's sat now. They finally tore the trees down. I understand it's been sold now three times. And it will not be developed for another few years. The Milton property has sold twice and it's up for sale now, according to the fellow that met with us on the water board. I went into the bank today and the new rate of mortgage, mortgage interest rate is at 5% today. Six months to nine months ago, it was 2.5%. There will be no building in Harrisville for the next number of years until we can get something going. I think that it is ridiculous that we even consider building a new building at this time. The money is far too expensive. The material is far too expensive and we are in a recession. I'm definitely against this tax proposal. And by the way, North Harrisville Road is a speed trap. We need to do something about that before we build any buildings for the city.
Hi, my name's Tammy Branley and I live on 450 W. I, I don't have anything to say about the taxes because that's my husband's department. He said I need to come. And I want to thank all the city council and the fire and the police department because you know, you do represent us, but thank you. We did vote you in. Thank you for running because guess what? I couldn't do the job. That's why I don't run for the council. So I just want to say thanks for everything you do. And, you know, let's work together and be a community. So I just wanna say thanks for everything you do. And you know, let's work together and be a community.
My name is Melissa Ferguson. I live on Highway eighty-nine as well as on a business on Highway eighty-nine. So the impact of these fees hits me twice. We have increased, doubled in size in Harrisville. Those impact fees should be paid for what you want to do instead of increasing our property taxes. On what you wanna use the money for, it's for you a new building, you're a new police station. What do we as residents get? You've taken away the splash pack. You've done away with Harrisville dates. The parade is no longer. And all of those I have been a part of that the citizens love. Also, the, the increase in cost of the property tax will, on her, on Walmart alone, theirs will increase two hundred and fifty thousand. Who will they pass their fees off to? But Harrisville residents. So we're, I'm just asking you to consider lowering the tax rate to less than what has been suggested. Thank you.
Is there anyone that's got comments that are different?
Do we have the opportunity to speak from the Zoom?
Sixteen sixty-one North Orange West. I'd like to actually echo what this guy was saying. You're, uh, is this the damn last thing that we've got going on here tonight? Just, it's not, I don't, I know it's not what you intended. It's not what we should have as a city. It's, you know, all here together. We should just be us. I really feel like you're doing your best. And I'd like to thank you for it. And coming and doing all this stuff that you do on a weekly basis that I don't do. Your presentation was great. It really helped me understand what's driving this. You know, that you got that whatever effective rate that goes down. So you got to come up with a little bit more here so that you can basically fill the gap. So you can actually stay even with what you've been doing. Is what it sounded like to me. Is that right? And you can't talk, right? But one thing I would like to just mention, I tried to go online to see if I could figure out all this stuff in advance and understand more. I couldn't find anything there on the website. So if you could, you know, make a link right there at the very beginning that says, go here and you can see this briefing. That would be cool. And also, you know, you guys. A lot of you, I've lived here forty-five years, a long time. I know all these guys all along. And I know this isn't the right place to say this, but it's a public forum. So I just have to mention that Carol's gonna punch me when I get home. But we came to Harrisville because of the slight that country, it was alfalfa fields, smelled good in the spring. Now it reminds me a little bit more of her. Not necessarily with all the commercial stuff that goes on there, but definitely with all the housing and all the subdivisions that was putting there. Just wanting to know that makes us sad. I hate to see Harrisville that I moved to forty-five years ago ending away the way it is with all this building. So thanks.
Are we able to give comment from the Zoom?
Sure. Want to say your name, please?
Yeah, Lex Patterson. I'm about a thirty-eight-year, thirty-nine-year Harrisville resident. Served on the council a number of years ago. So I understand the challenges that you're up against here, that we're all up against. I was on the internet today and, and I apologize, I, I didn't do as much research probably as I should have done for this meeting, but the thing that stuck out to me, I looked at the Weber County tax rates and especially was paying attention to our tri-city neighbors. North Ogden, Pleasant View, people that we share services with, with the fire and whatnot. And it stuck out to me that this increase would place us above both of our neighboring cities. And I, I'm just kinda curious why that would be. So I think it, and, and after tonight, some of the comments, and, and I appreciate the presentation because it clarified some things, but it seems to me like it's the same thing that we're all dealing with in our homes, which is trying to separate the wants and the needs. You know, what are the needs versus what are the wants? And then really trying to take the comments that have been given here and weigh those out and see if we can't come up with something that maybe separates those wants and needs a little bit better and maybe some planning to, you know, gradually get us to where we need to be instead of it all being in one lump sum. So. Anyway, I appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate the job you guys are doing and, and the challenges ahead of us. And I trust that you'll do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Dianne Karchner. I'm on much of my piece working seventy-five more. Um, most of my comments are just questions. I, for one, would just appreciate maybe just a little bit more of the overall specific numbers. I think that's what I lack. And I know that I was invited to come in and talk to mayor and also to get those information. I don't have access to what Diana had there. Um, I just think that on the website would be very helpful because when you see those numbers, it's very helpful for us. And if I hadn't those, there would have been more help for me to have the research beforehand. And going forward, I think if some of those are available to everyone in a more precise format, that would be helpful. I also don't understand our dealings with other cities. I know we've had, uh, where we live is one. There's been times when we've had a police officer from every city called out for something. And I'm, I'm just wondering, I don't understand how it works with other cities when we lack in police force or, and I know we don't have a city fire, but we have a county. And I'm just wondering how all of that works. I don't know how to learn more. It would be helpful maybe to have some links that we could look and see how, how all that works and what Harrisville is specifically responsible for money-wise and what we have to do with as far as needs and wants. I have a question about where is our, on our budget, if three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of a five and a half million budget is property taxes, where just the rest coming from? I didn't understand that. I didn't understand the rainy day fund. I didn't understand the bonds, if we could do a bond instead of raising property taxes for some of these things. I didn't understand impact fees or how much is being collected and why that's not more available for use. I don't understand where the impact fees go. The developers, I don't understand how the city works with, with the sale of property. I don't understand certified tax rate. I don't understand if we have large taxpayers who have a peel tax valuations. There's just a lot of things that we're relying on you to do. And we're hoping that you have all that information. And I just, just for learning purposes, it would be great to just have a lot more dumbed-down information that we could look at and would help us understand where you're coming from, what you're trying to do behind the scenes for that average person who doesn't do it like us all the time. That's all that comes to mind.
I'm Scott Sarathwaite. Live on Connecticut Avenue. I've lived here for over sixty years. Everything from this highway east was nothing but food. I've seen drastic change in the city over my lifespan, what the area considers. I think it's a very large increase that we're looking at. I mean, I, I know how you guys run probably your family budgets. I mean, you wouldn't be in the position you're at, the type of people you are if you didn't do that. So I know you guys do the right thing. And maybe I can answer this gals question over here about she sees pleasant being back in Harrisville or about back in Harrisville. That happens quite often. Quite often. I started my law enforcement career in Harrisville. I worked on law enforcement budgets on Washington Terrace. I retired from the sheriff's office. I know what these guys go through day, day in and day out. And I know that it's trickle-down effect from the state. The state's messed with their retirement system. If you didn't get in between before a certain time, now you gotta work a lot longer and you get a whole lot less. I mean, come on, folks. I mean, it's time to stay with it as well. But without law enforcement fire, this city's zero. Thank you.
My name's Clint Allred. Live on Pennsylvania one fifty East. This is kind of a different comment because I don't wanna keep feeding the same debt worse. But I think as I look at you guys, you're serving on the city council and you're doing your job. You're, you're members of our community too. You're doing your part to help the community by doing this. And I've been sitting here thinking, what can I do as a citizen to help? And there have been times where I've been part of a service project to clean up a baseball diamond. Or my wife has been on the Pioneer PTA that helped with the fall festival. And if there's things that we as the community can do, obviously, you know, we can't fill in as police officers and things like that. But if there's things that we can do to help with the fun stuff, the parks, clean up the weeds, anything else like that. If there's a way that you can communicate volunteer opportunities, like I personally would like to be involved. And I'm sure there's many in the room that would, because sometimes if it's, if it's a matter of, we wanna see the community improve, but it's outside of our budget, are there ways that we can do that with our own sweat and time rather than with our money? And so that's just an idea to put on. There's, are there ways that you can reach out to the community with volunteer opportunities?
If I'm not seeing anybody, I'm gonna shut it down just a couple of minutes. Better than I wanna have. I think we, I think it helps. I know your name, your concerns. I think the rest of the council has. I appreciate that all of you being here. I actually do. I, I feel like an honor to serve you. I take it very seriously. I think the rest of the council does. I'm not gonna answer all your concerns tonight, but I want you to know that a lot of those questions have been hung over. We have talked about it. I encourage you to come to council meeting. This is where you're gonna learn all this. This is where you find out things that we've been talking about for ten years. It's, it's a valuable thing to be involved in your city. I appreciate the opportunity to have, or the offer to have community involvement. That's how I got involved with the city. That's how I know a lot of you is through that. I do appreciate the council. We are doing this to ourselves at the same rate. Five out of six of us are on fixed incomes too. It's not that we're, are doing this irrationally. So we will still go over these. If you still have questions, there's a link. Did you have that on the last slide? I guess I've gotta cover myself. Would you give me a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm mostly close to the public hearing. Second.
Okay, a motion to second on paper? Okay, special carries. Thank you. If you have any more concerns, anything you wanna say, please come over here to the city or email. Mine is mayor@cityofharrisville.com. If you find the other gentleman, their first initial, their last name, cityofharrisville.com. And I appreciate you all being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?